Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jason Brophy and I'm a pediatric infectious disease physician at the Children's Hospital in Ottawa. Oh, thanks, yeah. First to start out, je voulais, j'aimerais vous inviter et remercier pour avoir venu à cette session sur la transition des adolescents sensibles positifs. Et aussi, nous allons passer la session en français en anglais, mais pour les personnes francophones, il y a des écteurs disponibles aussi. Mais quand même, toutes les personnes qui vont parler sont bilingues, donc s'il vous plaît, n'hésitez pas à poser vos questions en français et nous allons traduire. So, oh, and if there are French speakers who want to listen with head speakers, they're available at the back. So this session is entitled HIV Aging, Growing Up and Moving On: Optimizing Transition of Youth Living with HIV from Pediatric to Adult Care. And it is, well, my thing's not working. Can you advance this slide for me? Oh, one back. Anyway, we will have several speakers today. We have Dr. Fatima Kakar from San Justin here in Montreal, who's a pediatric infectious disease specialist. Dr. Nancy Nashid, who is also a pediatric infectious disease specialist and an HIV research fellow at the Hospital for Sick Children. And we're very lucky to have a youth living with HIV who's going to be sharing his experience. And our objectives for today are to introduce the idea of transition and what are the obstacles, what are the interventions that work or that we think work? And also to discuss one issue in Ontario called the Ontario Youth Transition Accord. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Kakar, who's going to lead us off.
Excellent. Well, thank you all for coming at this pre-precar session. When we speak about the issue of transition and transfer to adult care, we're usually speaking to other pediatricians. So on this occasion, it's really nice to see unfamiliar faces in the crowd because I think this is where we want to go. We want to get this message across. And so just for those who aren't familiar with what we're referring to, when we're referring to transition, we're actually referring to the transfer of pediatric patients to adult care. But it's more than just the transfer, the medical transfer of their records and their care, it's actually the process of transition. So transition is not actually an event where we officially discharge them from our clinic, it's more of a long-term process, which has a definition in the literature that's recognized as a purposeful plan process that addresses not just the medical, but also the psychosocial, the educational, the vocational needs of children and adolescents with chronic physical conditions and medical conditions as they move from child-centered pediatric care to adult systems. And why are we worried about this? Well, historically, we've known that in other chronic diseases, the transfer and the transition of care has been associated with a lot of problems and that children who've been in the pediatric system for years with complex care, when they move on to the adult care system, we have high rates of complication and failures. And this is Canadian-specific data where we know that in diabetes, for example, there's 40% loss to follow-up after six months post-transfer to adult care. In cases of congenital heart disease, where we spend millions repairing the hearts and making sure they're well-compliant with their treatment, 50% don't go to follow-up at a year post-transfer. Same thing for idiopathic arthritis. And even in cases of transplant, in renal transplant, we saw there's a third who lose their graft at a year post-transfer. And while we're worried about this in general, chronic medical conditions, HIV-infected adolescents are a specifically high-risk group that actually have more features that may make them prone to loss to transfer and may make the whole process more difficult. Because while it's actually well-recognized that it's normal for young adults and adolescents to have an element of grief at the moment that their care is transferred, because they've become very much attached to the pediatric care, the treatment team, and in some cases, it's become their second family, we know that for HIV-infected adolescents, this break of ties with the pediatric care is actually quite traumatic sometimes and represents an additional loss. And these are often youth who've lost parents, who've lost family members, who are orphaned, and who've come into the care system and adopted the second family. So this break of ties with the care can be quite traumatic. And also, as a chronic disease, HIV is different, as you know, from diabetes in that there is HIV-related stigma, often relationships to poverty, and the fact that many members of the family might have also died or may currently be living with HIV. So as a subject and as a potential case, HIV-infected adolescents are much higher, much higher risk of issues post-transfer to adult care. For those who know me, this is a talk I did back in 2009 when I was a young, more like that, young hip guy, pediatric adult fellow. And at that point, the issues in transition, I had just come back from spending time in New York City where I was appalled to realize that the age at which we transfer kids here in North America is the youngest in the developed world and that we officially transfer care at the age of 18. But over there, they were realizing that there were huge issues with this, and so many were holding on to their young adults until their mid-20s. So coming back, I was appalled and I thought, oh, this is, this is an issue. And so the framework back in 2009 was to really see, is there an issue? Are there problems with adolescents living with HIV post-transfer to adult care? And then at the same time, to see what different centers were doing, what were the models, do we have best practices? And so now that I'm older and crustier and more like the old man in the photo, the landscape in 2017 that I'm going to describe to you has evolved in that we do have emerging data. And so I'm going to talk to you about the transition data we have here in Canada and also some initiatives we've put into place to help our youth and also what's going on at the global level. So this Miss Transition Study, so when I first started as a staff person here in Montreal, I was young and enthused and I really wanted to know what was going on. And I arrived at the tail end of a study that had just been completed. When we looked at our HIV adolescents at the time that they were transferred to adult care to see actually how were they when we sent them to our adult care providers? Because often we hear, we were hearing stories about how disastrous the situation was when these adult care providers received them. So we said, okay, let's see how they're going. And it's quite true, to the 45 we looked in this study, nearly 70% were failing treatment. And by that, they had either detectable viremia or CD4 counts of less than 200 or triple-class drug resistance. So this was, again, back in 2011. So these children were born in the era prior to available combination ART, so many had had previous mono-dual drug experience. There are reasons for these kids potentially not doing as well. But it was alarming for us to realize that at the time of transfer, already their medical issues were problematic. And so what we did, and this is thanks to the FRQS, the Resuscité des Maladies Inflictures, is we did a study to look at these same teens to see how they were doing at a year and two years post-transfer to adult care. And so the real objective was to assess the medical outcomes, but also to look at their experience with the whole process of leaving pediatric to adult care. It was a very simple review where we took all the children and we only included those who were perinatally infected, but who were also engaged in care. So if we couldn't engage them in care prior to transfer, we were certain to have lost them after. And we wanted a minimum of one year since the time of transfer. And these patients were contacted using the last available record we had, but also thanks to our wonderful research nurse Sylvie Valois, very innovative ways to really find these kids, Facebook, social media, internet, friends of friends. So it's thanks to her really that this study got done because these kids are not easy to reach. But we made exceptional efforts to find these children and for those who consented, we administered a standardized questionnaire, either in person or via telephone, and contacted their medical current providers for access to their health records. And this is just the patient flow. So out of the 54 who were transferred, we had 45 eligible, 37 who we reached, and of the eight that we could not reach, we were able to confirm that four of these were alive by word of mouth from their family members or friends, but four unknown, four had died, eight refused participation, and 25 total completed the study. And patient characteristics, just to highlight, so we had four who died, so we had at least an 8.8% mortality. And of the four that were unknown, we don't know if they're alive or dead. So our mortality was actually potentially as high as 18% in the years post-transfer. The median time we'd had was about four years post-transfer, and I'll just go over some of the results with you here. Overall, of the 25 that completed the study, the majority were engaged in care. But you'll notice that the ones who refused participation, the ones we could not reach are potentially those who are not engaged in care. So we only had about half the cohorts, so we'll take that with a grain of salt. But what was alarming is that over half of them reported difficulties with adherence. So the green are those who have good adherence and the blue and purple is everybody who does not. So again, these teens transferred continuing to have problems with the adherence. We also found a decrease in their CD4 counts at just one year post-transfer, and this was statistically significant, from over 500 to just over 300. Some of the reasons they stated for us is that immediately post-transfer, they couldn't access their care because previously they were registered under the REMQ and now they had to reregister themselves. And so many went without their medications the immediate time post-transfer. We also looked at how they were doing, not just with respect to their medical care. And at the time of transfer, the majority were still really children, they were living with their family. Many were still in school, only about half had obtained their high school degrees. But among those who in school, they're a tough crowd and that they were continuing to work part-time to support themselves, and one in four was living on social assistance. The majority were still single and the majority also stated they had regular sexual partners, but only half routinely disclosed their HIV status to them. And then we actually looked at condom use within this population. And while only 60% used them with their regular sexual partners, the majority did use them with their occasional sexual partners. And one in four had become parents themselves. We then asked what I thought was the most interesting questions is really just to gauge their perception of the transition process that we'd had in place at that time. So we asked them, did you feel that you were ready to transfer at the age of 18? And over 92% said absolutely, we weren't ready. So I put these testimonials and the paper has more of the summary of them. The bottom line is that they all felt that 18 was way too early. It's kind of heartbreaking to hear what they say, but they really felt abandoned, they felt that they weren't ready and that we sort of pushed them out the door too quickly, too fast. And then we asked them whether, you know, those who were engaged, whether they were satisfied with their current healthcare providers. And the common thread was that no, because the appointments were too fast. And it's true that on the pediatric side, we tend to take a lot of time, they visit the nurse, they get hugs, they spend quite a lot of time in our clinics, and they felt that the appointments on the adult side were too rushed. They went in, they got a checkup, a blood work, within five minutes it was done. And the impression was that they didn't, they felt that they weren't really, the adult care providers didn't really care if they attended their appointments or not. So overall, they had an overall sense of dissatisfaction, even if the medical care was perfectly adequate. And then we asked them, well, how can we make things better? And there were a lot of different suggestions, which we'll talk about in Nancy's talk with interventions. But one of the key things is they would have liked to have known that this was going to happen, they would have liked to have been more prepared that this was going to happen, and potentially they would have liked a time of bridging where they could keep some care providers within Peds care while other care providers, such as the medical care, was transferred to adult side. And so this was a study done in Quebec, but the next question is, you know, we're unique here in Quebec, does this apply to the rest of the country? And so we quickly polled data from the Canadian Perinatal HIV Surveillance Program to actually see how many youths we had and how many were ready to transfer to adult care. This is actually data from 2012, and at that point, we'd established that of the 270 perinatally infected children in care, nearly half were ready to transfer to adult care by the age of, by 2017. In other words, half that number has actually, or potentially has recently transferred to adult care. And we just wanted to see how these kids were doing compared to the previous cohort. And reassuringly, these kids have a much better overall immune status, so pointing to the fact that better antiretroviral therapy, they're potentially not as bad off as the children in our initial study. And again, their CDC classifications are better. So potentially, this cohort is better off medically than the historical cohort of transitioned children. So our next step was actually meet with all the other Canadian centers. So thanks to CCHR-funded planning grant, we met in 2013 pediatric care providers and adult care providers across multiple centers in Canada to really figure out what was going on with the transition process and the transfer process across Canada and to really determine who was doing what, what the best practices were, what our challenges were, and to see whether we could establish any research questions and research priorities. And it was a great two-day meeting where we shared examples from our clinics and our best practices and our worst practices. We heard from the French NRS cohorts and the US FACS cohort. And I think our summary from this meeting, we had a lot of great ideas, and I summarize this in a checklist and in the report that we have, I'm just going to blow it up here, where we came up with a number of what I thought were really great initiatives that we all thought were best practices and that we should have, we should start engaging teens much earlier, we should have transition checklists and readiness checklists, we should have discharge summaries and transition groups, and we should review their medical care with them. So I'm not going to go into detail about all these initiatives, but we were really motivated and we said, you know what, this is great. We also had youths who came in and gave us their perspectives. And really, what was highlighted to us is that they acknowledged as well that it was an issue, we acknowledged as care providers that it was an issue. And we went away from this meeting saying, you know what, we all need to do better. And we went away, I think, motivated to do better in our clinics. And so again, I was young and motivated and enthusiastic. So quickly, we tried to implement all of this with the available resources that we had. So some of us delayed the transition of our teens as long as we could until the hospital administrators woke up and realized. We initiated in a lot of our teen groups, the discussions on transition, and we reached out to adult care providers in our setting to make them aware of the issue and to engage in the discussion. At our center, we had the adult care providers come to our clinic to meet the youth prior to transfer. We started the discussion early, so as early as 15, we started talking to them and they were asking why, but we started talking to them about this issue. We reviewed to them their medical education, their adherence. And we also brought in older transition teens to help support them. So I was really proud, and so now I'm just going to show you how well we're doing with this. And this was my model patient, he's now 21, and we, in his case, he was sort of the first pilot-perfect patient that was just at the rage age to benefit from all these interventions. So we delayed his transition until age 20. And he was great, you know, perfect adherence. We started the discussion well over three years prior to transfer of care. The adult physician came to our clinic to meet with him prior to, we even gave him some bridging time. In other words, until he fully finished and he was engaged in care, he could come to our clinic until he was engaged. We did group work, he was the lead instigator for this group work, completed the checklist. I mean, he was the perfect patient. And so proudly, a couple of weeks ago, he came in for a research appointment and, you know, we talked and I like to see how they're doing, and he proudly tells us that he's gone to three of his nine appointments in the previous year. His adult care provider calls us and says, what are you doing with this child? Why doesn't he come to his appointments? And he was the most perfect one. Him, I'm not so worried about though, because he was engaged in care before and he'll probably do okay, even if it's only three out of nine appointments. Others, though, are not so lucky, and this is one of the other more problematic ones, in that in his case, we also delayed transition until age 21 because he had a lot of neuropsychiatric issues. He had stopped all ARVs about two years prior. He had very erratic follow-up in our clinic, but we really made an effort to find him, call him, hound him until he showed up. But the problem is, we really couldn't access the right psychiatric care in our setting and that there was just no way for him to get that in a pediatric center. So we were obligated to transfer his care to an adult center that had the appropriate psychiatric facilities. Again, he was accompanied to his appointment by the social worker who spent the day with him there. We set up a contract of promise to follow through, we thought we were doing great, but unfortunately, he really is currently lost to follow-up and we have no way to track him down. So we're not doing too great. And the reason we talk about this is not just, you know, people have argued that, well, okay, but you don't have that many HIV-infected adolescents. We might not have that many here, but globally, it's an emerging huge problem. These are conservative estimates, where they're saying there are at least 1.7 to over 2 million HIV-infected adolescents between 10 and 19, the majority of which are in Sub-Saharan Africa. So if we here are seeing such huge problems with transfer and transition to adult care, one can only imagine what's happening in the rest of the world. And so I'm going to gloss over this just to say that now, it's become a recognized issue worldwide and that many different cohorts are now trying to study this issue. But one of the issues we've had is that there's really no good, clear outcome measures as to what we define as a successful transition. And Nancy will talk more about the issues in transition research, but different groups are now trying to harmonize the existing studies to pinpoint key variables that we'll use to measure what a successful transition is and what an unsuccessful transition is. So these are just some of the current studies that they're looking at to see what we've looked at and what the variables we've identified. And these are other ones that they've identified as future references, and eventually, there's going to be an online database on Redcap that will attempt to harmonize all of these variables so that these different transition studies can be merged. So with that, I'm going to end and I'm going to segue over to Nancy, who's going to talk a little bit more about the intervention. So I might have depressed you all with how badly we're doing, but, you know, we want to see what we can potentially do better. So I'm going to leave it to Nancy to talk about transition interventions. And thank you to all our funders and everybody who's really helped with this research.
Thank you, Fatima. Now I have the job of cheering everybody up after that. Okay, so just wanted to start, yeah, thank you. So thank you, everyone, again, for being here. And I was going to just spend some time talking about the evidence and some of the interventions right now for youth living with HIV during their transition to adult care. Okay, so as Fatima sort of laid out, some of the barriers that we encounter with our young people with HIV, but it is important to remember that transition, the concept of transition is not new. It is, you know, well-studied in the literature as far as other young people with chronic health conditions. However, youth perinatally especially infected with HIV, who are living with HIV, are unique amongst this cohort in that they face specific challenges that are not really shared amongst other young people. Some of the complications that they face are related to their lifelong infection, such as what Fatima mentioned with some of the dual and triple-class resistance, issues related to chronic morbidity or neuropsychiatric and mental health issues. And others are also psychosocial, and that's related to the sense of loss that they might have experienced or other issues that they have faced and hardships they have faced throughout their life. So what we do know in the literature that difficult transitions lead to bad outcomes, and that's pretty well-supported across the sphere. And some of the things that we see, including loss to follow-up, but also increased morbidity and mortality, and that encompasses both immune, virologic, and drug resistance measures, and also poor and social, insocial and educational outcomes as well. And one of the biggest issues really that Fatima also highlighted is we don't really know how to define transition, sorry, how to define success in transition. And there's been much discourse about it, but there's really not been a consensus on what outcome measures we're looking for. Like Fatima alluded to in the 2013 CHR-funded meeting, some of the identified outcomes that we all felt were important to judge a successful transition included things like linkage and engagement in adult care, adherence to medication, maintaining virologic suppression, and satisfaction with care, and also overall quality of life. And this was reviewed again in 2015 through another CHR-funded planning grant meeting. And this time, they included a bit more of the youth perspective and there was a few community members present. And they seemed to voice that their needs, while some of those outcomes are relevant to them, some of the things they identified was having more holistic outcomes of success, so provider-patient relationships, continuity of peer support groups that many of us have in our clinics, and also community supports. So when it comes to measuring transition outcomes, one of the, one of the main focuses in the literature really is about assessing readiness to transition. And the implication is that if youths feel ready to transition, they're likely to have better outcomes. So there are a number of tools that are published in the literature that assess readiness in youth to transition to adult care. None of these are HIV-specific, but some of the highlights about some of them, so for example, the UNC Transition Tool, this was developed by and for youth aged 12 to 20. And it was a 33-item scale that measures healthcare transition readiness for adolescents with chronic illness. And one of the key things about this is that it's not relying on just self-reporting, because many of us have the checklist where we have them check out how ready they feel, but they also kind of combine that with medical records as well. The ADAPT scale is meant for 16- to 17-year-olds with chronic illness as well, and this was based on a 26-item survey developed through a large focus group of diverse youth. And this looked more at quality of care and counseling on transition of self-management, treatment, and transfer planning. I'll skip on ahead just to not bore you too much, but the TRACK model is one of the only ones actually out of the bunch that is validated in the literature and was recently published in a systematic review looking at psychometric properties of transition readiness tools. And it is disease-neutral, but it does look at three main points, which is, it's been validated to have adequate content, construct validity, and internal consistency. And having something sort of adapted to meet those sort of validated tools would be helpful, but more adapted for our specific population. So it's very encouraging to hear that this is already starting to happen and the ball's rolling towards developing something specifically for our youth living with HIV. In terms of transition interventions, there is a lot in the literature about what everybody agrees on, which is that there needs to be an intervention. But as far as looking at outcomes in some of these interventions, there's very little in the literature actually looking at how well these things work. So national guidelines across the Canadian, American, and European and African as well, guidelines all call for having a continuous, coordinated, culturally-appropriate, compassionate, and family-centered transition program. And one of the models that kind of emerged from that philosophy is the Special Adolescent Clinic, which is seen in other settings as well, and it's a multidisciplinary approach looking at providing adolescent-specific medical and psychosocial needs. This is being piloted, this sort of concept is being piloted at least in one clinic in Canada, including a group of group clinics and electronic communications to enhance clinic attendance and patient support. So while this is something that is actively happening, there's not been outcome assessments yet about how well they are, they're working. And as far as reviewing the literature, we'll spend a little bit of time looking at some of the interventions that have been assessed for outcomes, but not necessarily in the transition context, but they do touch on relevant transition issues such as retention, adherence, knowledge, and transition readiness. So this is sort of a quick whirlwind through the literature, and this was taken from a paper by Judd et al. published in 2016, which is a bit short of a systematic review, but a very thorough review of all of these different interventions. So Drug Holidays is one, and this was a large study done by Butler et al. looking at 8- to 24-year-olds called the Breather Trial. And this randomized children and youth to five days on, two days off ART versus continuous ART. And their conclusions were that at 48 weeks, six in the intervention group and seven in the control group had a viral load greater than 50 copies per ml, and the difference was not statistically significant. As far as knowledge and adherence interventions, this is sort of the bulk of what I, where most of the literature is based. So there is a study looking at a broad age group between one and a half and 20 years that were in the US that randomized this group of youth to home visits by an RN eight times over three months. And they were looking specifically at the knowledge of HIV ART and as well adherence measured by two ways, so self-reporting as well as pharmacy refills. So this showed statistical significant improvement in knowledge, scores as well as pharmacy adherence, but they found no difference in self-reported adherence and no difference in CD4 and viral load counts. Moving on, so there was another similar study in Thailand looking at 15- to 24-year-olds, and they targeted specifically youth that had less than 95% adherence. So they had this health empowerment intervention over five sessions within an eight-session intervention. And they found that 83% of intervention group and about 22% of the control group had adherence greater than 95%, but this was not statistically significant. Moving along, so another group in Thailand looked at youth greater than 12 years old and looked at two groups and two individual sessions on focusing on issues that they think would be relevant, so knowledge, sexual health, coping skills, and life goals. And they used this KAP, or Knowledge Attitude Practices, scores at baseline in two months after this intervention. And again, they found statistically significant improvement in knowledge and attitude scores in the intervention group, although practice scores did not increase in either group. Another group that looked at this is in Luternot et al. in the US, which looked at, again, adherence in the 9- to 17-year-olds. And this was another randomized trial looking at multiple multi-system therapy over six months for ART adherence, and they did find that the viral load decreased significantly in the intervention group, but no difference in the CD4 count or in the adherence. So again, how to apply some of the results, it's a little bit unclear. Their final study in this, in this category was Foster et al. from the UK, which looked at 16- to 25-year-olds who were specifically having CD4 counts less than 200 off ART. And they looked at them at the point of them restarting ART, and they focused on a bunch of different interventions. So they had motivational interviewing, financial incentives, they really like put out the Ritz to see what would work. And they reported that the median CD4 count did improve. It was 30 at baseline, 140 at 12 months, but then 75 at the end, so kind of insignificant there. And then the median viral load was 12,870 at baseline, went up to negative 50 at 12 months, and then maintained, only six out of the 11 maintained at the end of the study. As far as some of the more successful adherence trials really looked more at inpatient DOT. So this is a very specific context. So these were both trials looking at admitted patients who were hospitalized related to complications of non-adherence. And both of them focused, one was a seven-day inpatient DOT and one was a 40-day DOT. And in the first, they did find that there was improvement. And in the first, they did find that there was improvement in the viral load at the end, but no change in the viral load at post DOT clinic appointment. So at the end of the trial, it's improved, but really nothing longstanding. And then with the more, the longer intervention group in the second trial, they did see that there was a statistically significant improvement in viral load and CD4 count by discharge and at six months post-discharge. This was a bit more promising. As far as peer support groups, there are two main studies that looked at this. So one based out of France and the other in Kenya. And they both looked at young, young teens, 12 to 18 was the first one in France. And they looked at peer support groups, 90 minutes every six weeks for 26 months. So it was quite a long intervention group. And at 24 months, they did see that there were improvements on self-reported worries about illness and perceptions about their treatment. But again, no statistically significant decline in the viral load in that. And then in the Kenya group, they specifically focused on 10 to 24 year olds who were just starting therapy. So they were brand new to care. And they did a focused intervention looking at healthcare, having more adolescent-friendly environment, having training for the healthcare workers, dedicated days with access to services and peer support groups. And they found that there was no difference between the pre-ART and post-ART loss to follow up before and after the intervention. So this is sort of the whirlwind of some of the interventions, not geared specifically to transition, but may kind of infer information about some of the things we are doing. But there still is a paucity of evidence about some of the ongoing transition interventions that are going on right now. So one, one group looked at a transition readiness checklist in the context of HIV, which is published in 2007. And they did see that their readiness to transition and level of anxiety before and after designed interventions for adolescents ready to transition. And they found that after intervention, all participants, participants improved in their readiness scores and levels of anxiety. So there's at least one that does say that that is helpful. And then recently, there was a big Cochrane review looking at general, not HIV-specific interventions for adolescent transition. And one of the main concepts that came out of that is really having electronic support and SMS support. So this concept is something I think that is starting to take off. So there's e-health right now being assessed in both Vancouver through a texting initiative. And at Sick Kids, we just started our VDOT study, which is looking at FaceTiming young people with, while they're taking their medication and having a, kind of a long sustained, almost DOT model, but through iPhones. So we were very fortunate to have had that sponsored. So we will hopefully keep you posted about how that goes. So as far as our experience at Sick Kids, so we do have a program in place called the Good to Go Program. It's, it's not just unique to HIV, but it has been adapted to our specific setting and it was implemented in our clinic since 2011. And this entails a number of different interventions. So pre-transition visits, having overlapping appointments and having a transition readiness checklist as well for patients to fill out, as well as knowledge assessment checklist that the healthcare providers fill out. And these are usually done at six month, six month intervals during their regularly scheduled clinic visits. So they didn't need to come especially for that. And we did have an initial preliminary assessment about six months after the intervention was rolled out. And the baseline transition readiness checklist score and the HIV-related knowledge scores did not really correlate with measures of immunologic suppression, patient clinic care attendance, caregiver clinic care attendance, or extent of ARV experience or virologic resistance or medication adherence. However, the checklist scores did, sorry, in addition to that, the checklist for the transition readiness did not change over the six month period, whereas the healthcare provider assessment of their knowledge did significantly change over the six month period. So their knowledge did show to have improved from 53% at baseline to 70% after. So despite them maybe not being able to yet feel ready, we do see that they are learning. So there is merit in continuing to do the, the intervention with them. So this is something that I'm hoping I will focus a little bit on during my CTN fellowship because we have not had a chance to reassess this intervention since the six month marker. And then finally, we'll just finish up by looking at this figure adapted from an adult and youth HIV treatment continuum, which is known as the Cascade of Care. And so you see that initially engagement in HIV care in, in the pediatric group, the youth aged 18 to 24 is initially, while they're in the pediatric group, is, is about on par. And then as they kind of transition through, so they're at their first visit is the next, the next bar. And then six months after looking at their engagement in care, you, you can kind of see that it's starting to drop off as far as how many of the youth are still engaged in care and have a suppressed viral load. This should also have a bar with a quality of life assessment as well. It didn't come out in this line, but. Oh, sorry, there, that's why. It was an animation. Okay, sorry. So like I said before, in pediatric care, in first adult visit and then retained in adult follow-up, you can see that the, the youth aged 18 to 24 are gradually decreasing. And then as well, the quality of life, overall quality of life is also decreasing. So this is something that I think we haven't yet tapped into as far as a tool specifically looking at this as a, as an outcome that is relevant by and expressed by the youth themselves. So that is it for me. So I'd like to thank the Gilead CTN for my, sponsoring my postdoctoral fellowship award and also my wonderful ID2 team at Sick Kids, a few of whom are still here today, for supporting everything that we do so far. Okay, that's it for me.
So at this point, I'd like to thank Fatima and Nancy for, Fatima providing an excellent overview of where we're at with transition in Canada, the activities that have been going on in the last several years and what we feel about transition. And then to Nancy for providing a summary of, of what scant available evidence there is for how we can support adolescents in care and how really we have very little evidence for the transition programs that we have in place. And so what are we to do? We all recognize that this is an important issue and we want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our patients. And so when we don't know what to do, sometimes we should ask the patient. We should go to the community and say, what do you need? And that often is a very helpful direction to take. And so at this point, I'm going to invite our youth speaker, Kabu. Before he come, while he's on his way up, I'd like to remind everybody that we're very lucky here at CAR to have the involvement, meaningful involvement of people living with HIV in our, in our meeting and to validate or question what we're doing in terms of research and our conclusions that we make. And when we have that participation, we should appreciate it. And we should also appreciate that sometimes if people come and speak in public, that doesn't mean that they're okay with us going up and saying, oh, I saw that person at the HIV conference and, and they were talking about living with HIV. So we still should respect privacy of people who, who provide us with the benefit of their experience in this setting and respect that moving forward. And our, our youth are a very vulnerable stage in their life and so we should respect that. So all that said, I'm going to invite Kabu to come up and join me. And I'm just going to give a brief introduction to what he's going to talk about. So in Ontario, in, in 2016, the Ontario AIDS Strategy came out with a, with a focus on HIV prevention and the treatment cascade that Nancy alluded to. And in that process, the OHDN went to the community and wanted to come up with something that will help support transition in an attempt to inform better engagement of youth transitioning to adult care. And so the AIDS Committee of Durham Region, along with the OHDN, had a special session where they invited 12 youth living with HIV from across the province to participate in the creation of this Transition Accord. And when I say that, what it is, is a document to inform pediatric and adult clinics what the ideal transition experience should be for young positive youth moving from pediatric to adult care. And so how that worked out is that facilitator Diane Faulkner helped facilitate a two-day think tank exercise where youth came together, shared their experiences, provided insight into their life and how much they all had in common. And using just brainstorming activities, the youth had an opportunity to write down what they appreciated, what they thought needed improvement in the process on both the pediatric and adult side and also what they as youth and patients should bring to the table in terms of their participation in care. And so it was, oh, I went too far, sorry. And so it was a rowdy event is what I'm, what I'm told, with a lot of good-looking young people and one Santa Claus. And, and they came up with some excellent recommendations. And so these have been introduced in Ontario as the Transition Accord and have been supplied to all the Ontario clinics through the HIV Treatment Network. And Kabu's now going to share with us his version of what the, what those, what the accord says and recommends. So thank you very much.
So basically as an old group, we were talking about how it felt from going to pediatric to the adult life. And we came with some ideas and we were talking about like how it felt. And so I remember it was here where we said that we didn't, we didn't like it when we were being treated like a number. So basically you have your appointment, you come in and then it's just, okay, here you go. It's like saying, number three, please come over here to room number this, that. So we were, we weren't really feeling, because there was no connection just from the beginning. It's just like, okay, come here, let's go. And then basically day by day, that's, that's what it was. As well, we were talking about that we wanted to be treated like a long-time survivor. Like basically you kind of, kind of know my stuff, you know, like I've been living this, with this for a while. And then, how can I say this, like as the years go by, like I got some knowledge, doctors give me knowledge. And then since I gained a lot, so like I'd like the adults to just, the adult clinic to just like, talk to me like I'm a survivor, just like, don't go back to the basics, like I know the basics, it's going to be. And then I'll be like, yeah, 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 there you go, here you go. And then afterwards, next thing you know, the appointment is done. So it's like, okay, there was not that much that we talked about. So yeah, like treat me like a long-time survivor, basically. And we needed to have a community of youth while in adult care. So like CHIO, that's what I like to say, CHIO was fantastic, okay? So like as a kid, I'm so attached to my mom, right? So you come in and then they tell you to appointments, your day, you come in. And then me, I'm always attached to my mom, so I'm a shy kind of kid. And at CHIO, they kind of like made me a separation from me and my mom. But it wasn't like they need you to separate you from your mom. They like made you so you can go towards the kids. And then like at the same time, you build something with the kids. You guys are really clever, just to let you guys know. It's like bits by bits, you know, you, you start friend, being friends with one and another one and it creates a group. And then out of the blue, honestly, like when I was around 16, 17, I would say, we, we just had a group. They're like, hey, let's get all these kids together at a morning before their appointments. And then let's just talk about some stuff. And it was pretty cool, like it gets you like going. You just want to come to your next appointment and then you know the rest is fun. But like being with them at the same time and then you actually ask them, when's your appointment next, when's that? So it's like, it was cool making a community. And then that's what we kind of wanted as well when we went to the adult care. Like I know I see flyers saying HIV meetings and stuff like that. But like as I just came in and adult care, that's not really what I kind of wanted. You just, you want your doctor to help you out, get other kids involved and stuff like that. That way you guys can be all together and then like it motivates you at the same time. The doc, you see how the doctor just relates to you and then it makes a connection. And yeah, so like we just wanted a community of youth in adult care. And now this, this is probably, this is, I remember myself, I even wrote that. So like I wanted the doctors, when I started going to adult care to talk to me like I'm 18, not that I'm 35. Because I remember, I remember when I was like 12, 13, I had a social worker that was talking to me about why should I take my medications? Because at that time, obviously you got to make, your mom just tells you to take your medication, but you don't know why. And then I asked her, why am I taking the meds and like, basically just why? And then she told me in a way that I would understand at that time. She's like, the meds are soldiers. And then they're just more soldiers to come to help you fight a basic, a war, basically. And at that time, obviously, you know, you play with toys, so it kind of made sense for me, right? So like she just told me it's more soldiers and you need more soldiers compared to like my siblings. Because my siblings don't have it, so I have it. And they're like, yeah, you need more soldiers, so if you take your medication, you get more soldiers. And then I'm like, okay, that makes sense. And then I remember I wanted a bike. So like my mom was like, huh, do you want a bike? Let's get them soldiers inside, let's go, let's go, let's go. And then you know, there's like motivations like this. So in adult care, I would like, because I remember the first, first couple of appointments, it was just like they just hit you with big words and like stuff that you're not used to. And you're just like, ah, this is not going to be interesting. Or it just goes here and here. All you need to know about is your CD4 and stuff like that, viral load. Those things you understand, but like when they tell you other stuff, you're just like, okay, 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 okay. So yeah, like we like it when you speak at our level, if that made sense, you know, just, you know, bits by bits, bits by bits. So yeah, at the same time, I remember CHIO, the, my mom, because you know, you're in high school at that time, you have your high school life going on and stuff. And I come home, my mom be like, okay, remember we have an appointment this, because pediatric would actually call. Be like, uh, you have an appointment this day, is it okay? And then adult care, it's just your responsibility, basically, right? They just throw you there, it's just like, okay, you, basically you have to come there and make the appointment. And then there's nothing else afterwards. There's no reminders, there's no like, hey, are you going to make it? The only reminder I ever got actually was because the doctor was not going to be able to make it. So that's the only one I got. And it was, it's basically that my next appointment is about to come. So like I'm trying to go as regularly, but like sometimes you just forget. And then they give you like a piece of paper, but like when that piece of paper gets forgotten or like you don't put it in your phone, I mean, you'd like to get a reminder, something to just tell you, someone to just tell you like, hey, you have an appointment coming up, are you going to make it? Like CHIO did, you know, are you going to make it, nah, 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 do you want us to reschedule, stuff like that? So yeah, just, you know, reminders of appointments. And now, so like the Transition Accord. So basically, we were a big, a big group of kids, just, you know, telling our stories and like, it was pretty fun. It was a fun, it was a fun day, you know, we were just like all there telling our experiences and stuff. And then we came with the, basically what we would like, what we commit to, what the adult clinic should commit to and then what the pediatric clinic should commit to. So we decided that we will engage with service providers, be proactive about our own care and nurture a relationship with other HIV-positive youth outside the clinic. Which the last part, we are kind of like really working on that, it's pretty easily. Like I'm not going to call him a leader, but we have like a leader kind of thing. He's able to just like, I don't know how he does it. He pinch points people and then sometimes we just, our group gets bigger and bigger and bigger in our city. So it's pretty cool, you know, you meet other people and then they talk to you about, okay, what meds are you taking? And then it's like, oh, I'm taking this one. Like you can see the evolutions and stuff, so it's, you know, it's pretty cool. As well, for pediatrics, we asked you guys to value HIV-positive youth as long-term survivors, of course. Better prepare us, of course, for the adult system, which you guys kind of do still, but like, you know, there's always tweaks and stuff. I'm sorry. Better prepare the adult, adult system to receive us as well. Motivate, motivate us to stay in care, involve parents in the care of our, of the HIV-positive youth. Be mindful of the issues HIV-positive youth face as they age, like the stigma. Like I think the stigma is probably the, I feel like the stigma is the thing that just stops HIV kids from just talking to everybody, because you never know what other people think. And then when you hear what people say, it's like you just regress and you're starting to not want to say anything. I remember one kid, I was grade 10, and then we have health class and then they talk about all the diseases and stuff, like other diseases, I didn't know much. But like when it came to HIV, you know, bam, I had the answers. And then after class, he just took, one of the kids took me aside, he's like, you know, you know a lot of stuff. And I'm like, yeah, encyclopedia and stuff like that, like, you know, Wikipedia and stuff like that. And they're like, no, no, I don't think it's that. I'm like, oh, yeah, it's that, you know? So sometimes you just got to lie, be like, yeah, that's what it is, you know? But like you, you know, that you know this, because you have it and then you've experienced it. You, you know what to do and stuff. But like sometimes if you talk too much, they'll start thinking something and then they might just like, go one way, you go this way. It's like, it gets complicated and stuff. So we just like try to escape that, you know? We asked as well to foster community for HIV-positive youth. And for the adult clinic, we asked you guys to value HIV-positive youth as long-term survivors as well. Engage us, especially that, just engage us, just. as well, engage us, especially that, just engage us, just get us to, motivate us, basically just, you know? And yeah, invest in building a relationship with HIV youth, especially that, because we don't want, we don't want it to be, how can I say this? Like a routine schedule, so you just come in, 10 minutes later, this happens, that, 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 and then done. Like, I remember pediatric, it was cool, you know, there's some snacks, you know, snacks. If you're waiting, you're just in a waiting room there, you can grab a snack, talk with somebody, some people, sometimes there were some toys and stuff, you know? Some of the staff would just come and talk to you, like, how you doing, before you go see their next doctor and stuff like that. So, you know, just like, you know, invest, build a relationship with us. We're pretty cool kids, just to let you know, you know? Support us to stay in care as well, because, I mean, I feel like adult care is like the last line for us, it's like, that's where we are. So I mean, if you help us out, it's like, we kinda like, you help us out, we help you, so we better. And foster community as well for HIV-positive youth, and support the whole person. So just support me, you know? That's where the bonding and the relationship comes in. And we, the HIV-positive youth, Ontario, asking all of you to, basically, sign on and agree. Yeah, that's us. Hey!
Thank you very, very much. I didn't pay him. It was all his words, but thank you. And so now we have a few minutes left, and we wanted to open it up to questions. I think we've covered a lot of interesting ground, and we have a varied audience here. So if anyone has any questions for anyone on the panel, please step forward. And like I said, if you wanna pose your question in French, then I think everyone here speaks French. Si vous voulez poser votre question en français, ils sont tous francophones ici. There's a microphone back there, too. This looks like a friendly face.
Hi, I'm Nikki Stein from the Teresa Group in Toronto. So just a couple of things. It struck me that when Fatima spoke and said that, you know, we're not doing so well. I think you guys are being really hard on yourselves. So why I say this is because, you know, I think when we talk about successful transition, we are trying to hold ourselves and youth and everybody to a much higher standard than we actually expect of adults in care. So I just, it feels like, you know, we, to be successfully transitioned means that you have to have like 100% adherence, and you have to be well-adjusted, and you have to have all these things. And maybe we're setting the bar a bit too high, because that's not what happens in real life, with adults anyway. So let's be a bit gentler on ourselves. So the other thing that struck me is that a lot of what we've seen has been focused only on the clinics, and there are so many components and so many players in this whole process. So it's not just the responsibility of the clinic to do absolutely everything for youth. So there are other variables, and you know, there are, 18 is a time when kids are having so much change in their lives anyway. They're finishing high school, maybe they're changing cities to go to tertiary education, the family pressures and issues and changes. They have to deal with, you know, maybe trying to negotiate employment, and that's really hard, youth unemployment is really high, and so there are a whole lot of additional stresses as well. And then the third and last thing, I think, is that what we hear constantly is that any youth who've heard about the possibility of injectables and not having to take medications every single day are completely and 100% behind that, and that may really help a lot of our issues.
Thanks very much, Nikki. I think all of those points are well-received. And I, back to your point about not being so hard on ourselves, I think what we learned at the two meetings that we had, one focused mostly on providers and the other focused on youth and young adults and their impressions of care and what they need, was really, as Kabu said, focusing on holistic care. And like, maybe you're not perfect, but you're engaged in care, and you're taking care of yourself, and you know how to take care of yourself if you need the help. And so I think we, our objective should be real world. We need metrics for funding agencies and ministries of health, but I think we need to have the big picture in mind, and what we want is healthy, happy youth who are able to go out and not be constricted by their disease and be able to have a normal life. Ariane?
Thank you. Oh, I don't know where to start, there's so much to say. Just a comment on Nikki's, and maybe we should not be too hard on ourselves in terms of patients and providers, in terms of, you know, reaching 100% adherence. That's a good lesson, and I think we're learning from that. We, as providers, we do remain a bit nervous about that, because we know that the consequences of not being close to 100% adherence, what they could be. But I think we can still strive towards that, but maybe leave us or leave them a little bit more time to get to it. And yes, relax a little bit about that, although it's really hard for us. One thing I was going to ask Kabu probably, and the youth, is it seems that some of our methods are a bit old-fashioned, like you mentioned giving a little paper for reminder as an appointment. That paper, you know, will be lost in a pocket in the laundry before you know it. So there are some initiatives using cellphone reminders and for use other tools as well. So I think that is probably things that we learned from you. Other things that involve like long questionnaires or lists, like the checklist, I must admit that I've, you know, I really tried hard to use it, but I saw that some of the kids were really bored with that, and they would really more happily talk about other stuff. And so there have been, I know there are some tools for adolescents to address the difficult questions and screen for different risk factors, and maybe talk about their meds and about adherence and some difficult questions that are way more tech-friendly or youth-friendly. But we, our hospital administrations and healthcare administrations are taking time to allow us to use those, because there's like issues of privacy, because if you enter data in a tablet or computer, then it's, there's a whole lot of barriers and roadblocks to get permission to do that. But I think if the youth or the patients themselves tell the administrations, you know, we're fed up with your papers and your reminders, and we want you to adjust to 2017, maybe putting a little bit of pressure, maybe that could help. And then allow us to send you reminders on your cellphones, or to call you, or to email you, or, I don't know, social media, I don't know, it has to be discussed, but you're part of the solution, I think.
Hello? Yeah. So basically, I remember as well, we actually talked about this, we, I remember when it was CHIO time, you guys were able to communicate with us, because you guys basically communicate with our parents, who just sent a message about, hey, we have our appointments this this day. So I think we, the youth, try to tell you guys that texting, texting is a good way, because I think it's way, all of us are basically using our phones. And then if we get a text, we kinda like more have it inside, because we always see it on our phone. I have my dental clinic appointments by email, so I mean, I think that kinda works as well. And then, you know, we, I think it's more of trying, not the old-fashioned way with the paper, but like, the way the world basically works today, it's all electronics. So I think electronic works a lot, which is...
You're saying we're dinosaurs? You can say yes.
Hey, I'm the youth, right? So yeah, we always try new methods. And it's, that's why it's better to have a relationship with the patient, because at the same time, you'll know what's the best way to reach him, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, like Instagram, stuff like that, you can know where to get his full attention. So yeah, always try something new, I guess.
And so we're almost at the end of our time, so we'll give our last comment to Mona.
Okay, thanks. Mona Lutfi, I'm one of those adult doctors from Toronto.
What a cool one.
Well, one thing I wanna say was, as an adult doctor, it was really important to have some events to listen to the youth, because it was a real eye-opener for me to actually learn that the young adults, like, I thought, oh, they wanna be treated as adults, like, that's it, like, I got 35-year-old. And so like, actually, learning that that wasn't the case as an adult doctor was really important for me. And I think that that message has to get out to more adult doctors. So, and actually have youth go and meet with the adult doctors to go over the slides and, you know, tell them more. We send reminders, we text in clinic, and then we tried to do one of your advice, we booked like half a dozen of my youth patients that had transitioned on an afternoon, one afternoon, ordered pizza, you know, and like one youth, one person came. So it was like an extra-large pizza for two of us. So my question to you is, yes, you can book everybody on one afternoon, but then people don't come. And so, you know, I have, and it would be really great if we could have some kind of peer leader, community-based funding, so that it wasn't just, you know, you know, I'm kinda boring, like, they don't wanna come and see me. But if there was actually a peer leader that could send the text and the reminders and kinda corral people to come for, you know, Pizza Doctor Day, or, I don't know, but there's, like, yes, you wrote the suggestions, but no one came to my pizza day. What do you, do you have advice for me?
The youth, the teen groups are some of the, like, the most awesome groups, and also some of the most frustrating ones in the world for the reasons you described. When it works and they come, and, I mean, they don't wanna leave clinic, they're having so much fun, like, it's such a great experience, but it's also, we share that, in that you can plan things and have people come, and nobody shows up. And I don't know the solution for getting out of that predictability, the unpredictability of the youth, but when it works, it really is awesome, so I think it's still worth trying.
So I can add to that. So in pediatric clinic, you guys, when you guys assemble all the kids, you guys will pinpoint who the leader is eventually. You won't probably like realize they want to get them, but like, by their relationship, you'll see who's the one that's the most into it, and then you'll realize that, okay, with that guy, you'll be able to, which basically is my experience. He's one-year-old and me, so I mean, already scared, so he's done. And then he's able to like, let us know, he asks us sometimes, when's your, he's really involved, I can say that, he's really involved, so that's already a good thing about a leader. He's really involved, and then he asks us, like, when you have your appointment, some, before I transition, he told me how it is, and then he's like, okay, what kind of module you're gonna be in, this is how you do it. I said, so like, this is why it's good to have like a community. And then, once you get in touch with him, you know, like, Jibril knows, we, sometimes he has events, and then he tells, and then he transfers the message to basically our leader, and our leader transfers the message to like all of us at the same time. And then we have meetings, sometimes we get together and...
Do you have a WhatsApp group?
No, not really, actually, we're off Facebook, Facebook group. So like, we basically talk to each other, and then the leader tells us, okay, so is this thing happening here, are you guys down? Or like this thing, or, and then sometimes he's like, well, we haven't seen each other for a while, let's make a meeting, and then this happens, and then we all, we meet, and then, so yeah, community is really important. Getting the youth together from pediatric clinic already, and they grow together, that's even a plus. Getting them from adult, it's probably gonna be a rough start, because they're just like, okay, yeah, you have that, you have that. But like, being in them, being involved with them, and at the same time, like, being kinda like a cool mom, a cool dad with them, that'll help 100%. I can say, yeah, just find a leader in a pediatric clinic, you know?
Thanks. So I think we have to clue it up. I'd like to thank our excellent panel of speakers for your time and efforts, and I'd like to thank all of you for your attention, and I wish you all an excellent CAR. Thanks.